Good evening, thanks for the last follow-up meeting to Florida. First up is the approval of this from...
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to play with it in time before and after what happened, I apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm trying to...
Yeah, so, two, three...
Did you see an electronic...
Yeah. Who we get the approval for?
I didn't have any changes. So I didn't have that many names to add?
Nope.
Um, I think you have two issues here, Glazer, who was J C T, but I think I stopped, so I think I stopped. But yeah, it's okay.
So I've indicated motion to approve it. Any more discussion? All those in favor? First up is six comments. You are at any? Hearing none now, move along. Uh, presentation of the school F Y I. Whole business, um, we do have the... Somewhere or past, past campus. The draft for the... Whitney usage.
So this form was developed, I think, with Sarah Kimmel and Jessica. And the basic change is that there's a base fee now in, for every usage, which is waived in the event of having a keyhole, so that more of us put some guaranteed minimum for the event where we have a custodian.
Yeah, I did want to credit Sarah, because she really must have worked on this, but the only thing she tried to do was maybe so that these reflected actual usage of the space, because before it was kind of hazardous, no consistency. So now people want to say, this is why this is this cost, this is why this is this fee. So it's meant to reflect the best use of this, find balance out, the right space to use, but we need to compensate, you know, look at the studio staff and other staff, be careful, there are these...
So the grid on the map side is what Susan uses when she has that person, uh, for all the applications. Up above they say how many people they would expect food, et cetera, and then she calculates it on the back and... And we are now doing every event, even those sponsored by the Whitney group, because they get the goal where they sometimes cover it, so does the cost, and so the cost to the, um, person putting it on, the same amount, but it will let someone pay a street percent or so.
And, and there was a discussion on the Whitney center side, that they would rather pay for those and get usage of the facility and compensate the school, or it's going to compensate the district, um, because they're, it further to their mission.
Again, what is made that, and a little bit further to, because in the contract that the Whitney Foundation has over the school, uh, for use of the building, part of the, um, annual, uh, revenue from the Whitney Foundation is supposed to cover programming. So that was the way to kind of channel the program and funds through the Whitney Foundation to the school. It's not supposed to be split up into, uh, per se, to some X amount for each program and capital improvements, um, and, and maintenance. So that was one way that the, the programming and that piece could be channeled through, um, to the school.
I have two things. One, one of the things I always bring up tonight, really think when people are making money, we should charge more. Like, and I, and two, I don't know, you can run over tables.
Oh, yeah.
I let him back where it says, we've got a term is one with 50% deposit. That's percent if I handle.
Oh, I see. Okay. What could I write you that?
Oh, yeah.
So I don't know, you know, I...
I think it's definitely...
Seven right direction, and I, you know, and I hate to single out Zoom already over, because that's what I always do when I bring up this point, but there weren't the only, like, full profit ones in here, and, you know, if everybody's happy with it, fine, we just seem a little weird. Somebody can rent a space for that cheap, and it's their business.
Right.
I, I hear that point, Keith, and, you know, I was on the other side of that. I think we're at a point now where, to me, overall, if we don't have, you know, a five to nothing approval of it, I think that's perfectly fine, if you're honestly, you know, object to it, that's perfect.
I'm not going to object to it, I'm just saying, I don't, I don't know what the answer is either. I'm just not, you know, maybe me, um, Jackson resident, I don't know how much charges, though, they charge, but maybe non-Jackson residents have to pay two bucks more, and that goes to the fee, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, but to me, somebody's doing it for profit, for their livelihood and for their business, I would love if I could rent a place for five dollars a day. You know?
It's five dollars a month.
Well, you know...
I think it's something that we take note of, that we can monitor as the situation, you know, as...
Are there all Jackson residents, every single time? I probably wouldn't have a problem, but I don't know, are there, or any Jackson residents there?
I guess, what, to me, why I'm okay with it, Keith, and I see your point, I think it's a good one, but it's, we reserve, meaning we, you know, the Whitney, um, board and the school, reserves the right to refuse anyone who wants access to the building.
Yeah.
And it's not like we're just, you know, openly marketing this building for, for profit, able to come here and use. Everything this building gets used for really is for the benefit of the community, even if it's, if it's a private wedding that's happening here, it's still promoting the community of Jackson. We have the ability to say, you know, we don't want that group, or profit, they need a lot of money. Because no one's coming here and getting a lot of money.
Yeah.
And, and that's the difference. If there was, wasn't people was doing it then, I think you might have a bigger point, you know, you have, it's costing the community money to have this building, um, and these groups are using it really, um, subsidized rate. I don't really see that as being an overall problem.
And that's, and that's why I say, I hate to keep singling on Zoom, but it's, it's, you know, and it's not even, it's not the Zoom work, it's not the, the five dollars, it's just the major profit, you know? It's like I said, if I knew they were all Jackson residents, tiny, let's give it to them for free, if we're giving something, providing something to the, for the townspeople, but it's, you know, I don't know, I think that, I don't know, does anybody?
It makes you feel better, mostly, I'll go to the G P A after, and only one of them is... Two, some participants.
Participating, so, whether it's Sarah Plumb's, and it's not all Jackson residents, but I can tell you that there are evenings where I wonder why Dottie comes, because there's three of us, you know?
I'm not saying I walk her year and things, that's not what I'm saying at all, I'm just saying it's from, you know, a standpoint of finances, it just seems like...
But, but I think that from the idea that, you know, it's a gift to have this building on the school grounds, and the more accessible to the community this building can be, even what is a for-profit group, it's still opening that up to a broader range of the community, and the better, but the more that happens, the more we can really justify having this building here. So I'm gonna...
Yeah, I'm not gonna go against what you're saying, I'm completely comfortable with it.
And I will say, I, I think you're raising a very valid concern, and it is something the committee looked at, and that was one of the things that Sarah ran back and forth on. For what it's worth, they're very open to continuing the conversation, and we've been monitoring it for how long? I mean, like, five months to get on stuff. And so if we start to see a trend or way or another, I think it's, they're totally open to us going back and saying, let's, let's change the plan. Uh, you know, this was just trying to get a little bit more fair, and actually to have some sort of formal framework, so that people were treated judiciously, cost afford. But I think we're saying, because $25 for nine for five hours is not all, you know, for such a for-profit business.
Well, then she doesn't need five hours of this.
No, I'm just thinking, like, instead of a shower with five hours, you can take the time.
Was this approved by the H E P, or was that today?
Yes.
So that's just temporary, or...
Yes.
Uh, are we comfortable with approving the draft as it is?
Yeah.
In my opinion, yes.
Um, I think, except the motion to approve the draft, the Whitney, the Whitney Center's request for use form?
I guess I'm naming the second order, the third. I thought Jessica was the... Yeah, it's my... Alright, so yeah.
Janet, yeah?
Yeah.
Uh, all those in favor?
Good job.
Thanks, Jessica. I appreciate it. Always like committee work with us and continue to work with us, because I think it is always going to be a work in progress.
And thank you, Sarah Kimmel, for what you did. I know she's not here, but I very appreciate all the work.
Brings us to preschool and next steps. So I guess the first question on preschool is, uh, the board, if we want to continue to pursue the idea of a preschool, at this point, maybe looking at the, um, seventeen, eighteen, oh, I'm sorry, eighteen, nineteen school year, is that an interest, or it continues to push to pursue?
Yes.
I don't know, I mean, I have a, I have a question on that. Is there any bills in place, or anything moving anywhere where it would allow townspeople to make those type of views? At the school choice, I don't know, we saw...
Doctor?
Oh. Is there anything, or... Lots of discussion, I guess, that that's going to be our first step on this thing.
So there, one of the things I'm going to say is just a brief update, the, I was in touch with Gail Doctor, the, um, the pastor over there, who is working with the committee on their end to look at answering the questions we have gone to them with. So they're just kind of doing their thing right now, uh, and what I was hoping, as the person who finished up that committee, and is hoping for the over, whatever happens next, um, there are some bills that are going on, I actually thought you might be interested in, um, there's House Bill 313 that's being looked at, which allows for scholarships. And this week, um, on Tuesday, there was a hearing, which I wasn't able to make, but, um, Senate Bill 8 F N, it's relative to school attendance in towns with no public schools. So the, the Senate actually is picking up what is House Bill 1637, uh, which is a lot of numbers and things like that, but basically it's a bill that would allow a school that does not have a, um, I'm sorry, a district that does not offer a particular rate in your town to pay other towns or other schools.
That's the sort of...
No, that's a scholarship, that, um, I couldn't think, actually, I think I made that, um, I have one copy. So the old version is 1637, which was a House Bill, but the current bill, which was just, um, this last year, it was just discussed, uh, it's Senate Bill 8 F N, I need to look it up, otherwise we need copies, but I haven't gotten an update on it since then, I don't know if Kevin, if you have.
I have, no. To clarify on that, Jessica, that's, that if you don't have that grade level in your district, is to send that, to you a private school for that?
Well, it, it's, there's a number of solutions that they're looking at.
Because they don't want to steal all our money, do they, to send their students to another school?
A public school.
We do for a seven, eight...
Right, another public school, right. But when, but when we looked at it, currently, as I understand it, please correct me, Kevin, if I'm wrong, but, um, currently the law is that you can pay another public school, but it is gray, whether you can pay to send them to a private school, although there are towns that seem to do it and are not having a problem. But what happened is there's a big lawsuit going on right now, it's the court and lawsuit from, I'm not getting into the details, but there's a lawsuit pending, and what the legislature has done is that they are trying to pick it up and pass a law that would, that would circumvent that court and lawsuit, so that a town could in fact pay private schools, basically, it's a voucher system.
And, and I guess I'd like to back up a little bit here. Because if we're going to pursue the idea of school choice or vouchers, that'd be a whole new discussion, that we've never talked about this board. And I don't have any problem with the board wants to have a discussion about that, but that to me is a completely different discussion than what we're currently considering for preschool. And we, the committee went through a process, came up with a recommendation that, at this point in time, is taken off the table, because the church doesn't want to pursue it for the seventeen, eighteen school year. They've indicated to us that they're open to having discussions further on. So I think that the first thing we need to figure out, as a board, is where do we go from here? So that, you know, the, the discussion about vouchers and school choice, for me, is if that's the area we want to pursue, then we need to start a process to pursue that. And, uh, if that's a broader discussion, I think, than what we currently have on the table, or have some room to be prepared.
Well, the reason I asked pretty much without coming on being, I think we were overwhelmed with the fact that we need to support. I have a great question, I, I can't say a question, I can't even put my phone on. There's a, there's a, without people stopping by, they're telling me, they don't want me to spend any time on what I do.
I, I, Keith, that's, that's a subjective...
Maybe, that's the way I have it.
Because I heard, I heard the crowd, it's been a fifty, fifty, and I would go back to the, the first, um, sounding board we got for, um, we had a listening post, the first listening post we had for, we had almost as many people at that meeting as we did at the last meeting, and almost everyone at that meeting was in favor of preschool, and in favor of preschool being in Jackson. The other thing I heard, and this is to address, to me, the school choice or the voucher, all the parents in the community that spoke to the preschool, their number one reason for wanting it in Jackson was for, that's how they can best use it. So if we're talking about using vouchers, um, or scholarships to send their kids out of town, does that meet the needs of Jackson parents?
It addresses the need of people who don't have the money for it. It doesn't address the...
And it addresses the need of people who need to go down there.
Right.
Is there a way to, um...
But, but so I do want to go back to what, again, we have on the table, do we want to pursue it anymore or not? If it's, if the idea is that what we're hearing from the community is what you're hearing, and what you're hearing, and what I'm hearing, I don't see how we resolve that, because we're hearing lots of things. I, you're overwhelmed, and everyone that I hear from is, is in favor of the idea of preschool. A lot of the people I hear from are concerned about the cost, did not like the cost associated with what we're offering. So that either needs to be, either the cost needs to be pared down, or the cost needs to be explained. And that's something that we could pursue, uh, we could pursue, we could not pursue it all, but the option is saying, you know, we're not even talking about preschool anymore.
Well, I think we can bring up any time, whether we decide to put it down now or not, right?
But we're not, one way backwards, again, the church was what was recommended, the church was in favor of pursuing, the church left it removed from the table for next year.
Right.
It's still on the table for the eighteen, nineteen school year. Do we want to pursue discussions with the church to do that or not?
And, and just to be, these are bills that they have done, so I just wanted you to understand, you know, so we're basically in the same position we were in last month, in a holding pattern. I mean, one thing I will say is, we've talked about having a bigger discussion about our school and the district. Perhaps we can wait, I know we've waited a lot of time, but maybe we can say, there's nothing for us to decide on today, other than let's get the more information from the church, if they're able to get it to us. Otherwise, can we wait a month or two, because things will resolve themselves and give us answers that we might not have to debate? Right? Because these might not become the law, the church might come back to us and say, no, we have this space.
I guess that's a great, that's a great point, Jessica, we, we've got time to everything, but the one thing that we probably don't need to wait for is, is there any reason to stop communications with the church as far as utilizing that space, keeping it open as an option?
No. I, I'd say if you've come this far, I would like to see it through, and see what the church has to say, close the list on the church, at least for the next two, eighteen, nineteen, if they're going to come back and say it's not going to work, or what are their obstacles, and how to overcome them. Please figure that out, flush out the process that we had already started, because right now we're kind of, we, we ended now.
At the very least, at the very least, if we were to do that, then we can know if the church is an option or isn't an option. And why wouldn't we want to know whether it's an option or not?
Well, I, I would vote no anyways, because I don't want preschool. I don't, I don't trust our leadership to run it, I don't trust the numbers, I think it's going to go up. I think we're putting other businesses out of, out of, we're, you know, usurping, people, people to start a business, all of you guys are self-employed, it's a lot of work, these guys have got a lot of work to start these businesses. And now we have a bunch of inept bureaucrats that want to, you know, take taxpayer money and start what we want here, and I'm, I'm nervous. So yeah, I would say no, but I wouldn't be the only one, so we can still, if we vote to keep it open, we keep it open.
Fair enough.
Yeah. I, I would explain it, about the possibility of a preschool in the town, or something. I wasn't thrilled with the church option. And it wasn't going to make me go now, but I wasn't thrilled, you know? And if, if it fit in our current building, I would probably be, probably go for it. I'd probably be very, very interested in the seat of that a little bit more, but being in a house, secondly, and I'm still really having a hard time grasping that.
And I'll say this, as, as someone who sat in on all of those meetings, and ultimately, we voted to, to put that forward, I was not, that would not have been my first choice, if I could individually be the leader for that project. So something I would like to see, I do think that preschool is important, and I would like to see us routinely discussing, if there's a way to do it closer, like, in our buildings. Maybe that, that's something I would like to see. I don't know if I, I, I would want to continue to get the information from the church, because I believe in being educated.
I think we should, is that at least you should have more concrete, something more concrete to present to the townspeople, whether it's, you know, as a listening post or whatever, at least you have something more concrete.
I mean, well, wait for them, I think it's something that now that you all have seen the presentation, now that the townspeople have seen it, we've gotten a lot of feedback on it, maybe there is another way to skin my cat. You know, I think, um, I can't remember his last name, Bob was saying he didn't think it was innovative enough in terms of funding. Well, I take that as challenge, maybe there is a better way to do it. So let's, we have the time, let's, if, if we think it's important to look at preschool solutions for our community, then let's just keep in mind that we've got a certain timeline, and if we can hold the line as long as we can, let's do that, and make the decisions when we have to.
And if I could just add, the reason that I felt that our school was currently not an option is because we would have to impact our current programming and our current configuration in order to accommodate that, whether it meant taking our music and our arts program and putting them back in the heart of the classroom, or putting three grade levels in one classroom, those options didn't, I didn't want to sacrifice our current high-quality programming for the preschool, so that was a lot of what the reason was behind.
I, I agree completely with you, and I wasn't saying we should print it, I'm just saying, if there was room, I would be, I would... I think we should.
We don't really, we don't really need to decide anything tonight, but time is going to spin quickly, honestly. And I, I guess, I guess maybe we don't really know what we're going to do, so we're going to have to at some point address it, you know, so we'll do that.
I think we should start with the information, and then watch the listening post, and the spread one, and then try to get a better idea.
Yeah, I thought that's, the information on what, that's what I was discussing.
On how, it's like, that's, we don't know how, we don't know, at least the locals don't know what we have to set up, and this man, nobody, and we're all concerned about the answer questions about at the church, but we don't know, and maybe when those, when those answers can be answered, you know, I, I don't know.
The other thing is, from my end, if you're going to have a good conversation, I would, I, I know that these are separate issues that we're going to have to decide on separately, but for me, I think there's some overarching issues I would like to talk about, and this fits into them from my perspective, and how those other issues get decided, it's almost like a movie, one side, if you take something off, it, it flies up, and I'd like it to be leveled, so if we can go by one or two, I would be for that.
So I'm sort of staying in touch with the church, if that's you.
Well, the last, the last conversation we had was we emailed, I copied, we all, um, basically, the pastor has a committee over on the church side, because she needs to bring all these people to the meeting, and they're looking at our own, so I think about whether they even want to answer the question. So I think so, look at the moment, they have a lot of people looking, so she has, we gave them all the materials again, and they're looking at it, and I just said, if they have questions, they can come back to us, but otherwise, they can just let us know, and we'll let them know if we want the answers.
So should we keep this...
So we can just keep it all, yes.
But who's going to follow it anyway?
I'm happy to say... I mean, it's not a bringing down to say...
I think the preschool committee should, committee, completely pass, presented us with a recommendation, and that approved for this year. I think we don't need to task that preschool committee, or anything further, I think that if we want to keep the ties open with the church at this point, we just allow Gail to keep contact over with the church.
I just want to make sure we have something.
And see where it's going.
Can I ask a question?
Uh, sure.
I, I just want to add the information that I've heard from other parents, which was a lot of interest in finding out in order, about the options for the preschool, and excitement towards having more programming that would be an advantage for those kids at a younger age, as far as educational resources here in Jackson. And so I guess I'd like to see the, at least what the options would be, and I don't think the church is our only option, but I know that a lot of the parents that were here, um, at the last, um, meeting about the preschool, were motivated to help in some way, but not sure how, and so I don't know if you, if we can ask that preschool committee to follow up, to at least say, what will this space be? Or if you are looking for other people to do that work, I think there's some motivation in the community to answer those questions. And I guess I want, so I want to ask that, like, is there a way to task someone with at least finding a possibility of a location to give more...
And, and I would agree with that, yeah, but that's why I don't think necessarily the committee can do that.
No.
I think that, you know, if, if the board member wanted to pursue alternative options for spacing, it might be more streamlined to, for that person, a single individual, to look through the possibilities, bring it back to the board, and then if we wanted to continue with the preschool committee to pursue that space, and what that looks like would be probably the best way to do that. Some of the, you know, too many people in law with a process, you're not going to get too far with these. You've got to organize the people to come together and meet, make a decision on something. I think at this point, we'd probably be better off in, is there anybody that's interested in just pursuing other options for spacing? At this point, but if, just bring the team for discussion next time, or maybe we'll put that kind of thing off, and so we don't really need the end of people. At the end of the mission, we really rate that, and we have a budget here, we don't need the end until April, April, the reorganization, while they're going to be conducting our ordinary business that night. At some point, we were supposed to plan another people, um, meeting, I don't see that happening, we can probably do that already in, in March on District Night. Why don't we do that then? But...
I mean, just to simplify things, I, I would say that I agree, I think that the committee, I, I really give kudos to the committee that worked on that, if they did finish and pass, I think we'll finish with that, I don't think we need a group of people working on it. We have all the information on all the other spaces, so that's something that anyone can have, if they like that. I think as far as following up, it's very simple, it's just keeping in contact with the pastor of the church right now, because she has a lot of work that she's doing. I personally don't care if it is me, but I do think it should be a board member, because I think part of what this should be is something coming from the board determining it, not from the staff side of things.
But another problem about this, I think if we were divided for, and that's why I think we better off, it's not the board, because we just want information about that space, and when it comes to administering a preschool in another building, we don't know what the management of that structure is going to look like at this point in time, but we do know it's not going to be, or it is going to be administering that building at all.
Right.
To me, be better off having Gail be the person that does that, and she's going to be the person, the princess would be the person that's going to be administering the building, and that's the person that we really need to more assertive information at this point in time, I think, for something like that. And it also takes a politics out of it, because she's in a different place than Jen's, and a place than many people's. I think all five of us are in different places on right now.
Yeah.
And...
The issue, the issue though, is that Gail is in her specific place, in what, where she wants that preschool to go. So we're, I think we still need to keep it in mind about options, and I don't know, I don't, this is no challenge to integrity, Gail, but you can go clear about your position on the matter. So, you know, my concern is just having someone who is still open to possibilities, and now who's not going to drive the answer one way or another. So that's, that's my concern, but for what it's worth.
But the decision that the church makes is autonomous to me.
Well, I mean...
It should be, I don't know, I don't...
No, it should be, but there is a give and take of conversation, there are questions that are asked and answered, that, Gail, I can tell you this, Gail answered questions a certain way, I would have answered them a separate way, when we were discussing possibilities for that space, just because we have a lot of different people and the way we look at it. So I don't want to spend too much time on this.
We can, actually, we can, we can move on. Let's, uh, just adjourn this meeting, actually, we don't, we can read the... I'm just going to open the, uh, help here, but... We can go back into this, uh, help here. So we need to go, here we are, opening the help here, on our, on our, I think we will just go through the board article one by one. Article one is our operating budget, which is the bulk of our, our budget. And typically, what we, we do is, um, it's kind of go through, go through the highlights of it, and then we'll talk about the changes that happened from the previous budget to this one, and if people have questions for this, on the changes, we can discuss those, and we'll go in there.
Okay, folks, I'm going to refer to the, the top cover sheet with the, kind of the overall budget. You'll see that the overall budget line is at $167,105. At the bottom of the page, it talks about a summary of proposed increases and decreases. At the bottom of the page, it talks about a summary of proposed increases and decreases. So these are just the pluses and the minuses. So that first line is salaries increased, including after-school position that was added this year, salary adjustments as a result of the adopted salary schedule from Jackson staff. And then you go down to the health insurance, it's up $5,384. That was a 10.7% increase to the premiums for this year. And you'll see the retirement as well, that was the shifting of the state to 2% increase to the retirement. So salaries and benefit line is up $61,866. If you flip the page, you'll see that special education overall is down $36,000. And that was related to services and student needs, so there's a reduction there. You'll see your tuition costs, uh, $136, almost $137,000. And that's because you have more students that are at the high school and at the middle school. So you have additional students. So you went from 13 students to 15 students to Barburg. And then you went from 25 to 27.5 students at the high school. You'll see the cost of the, the bond is going down, and that will continue to go, go down over the remainder of the, uh, the bond. And that continues $136,000. The next line, section down, the total maintenance. You'll see, the big ticket item is that increase of $11,595. And that's for a change to the card system, key card system, instead of keys for the Whitney Center and for the, um, the grammar school. Going down, you'll see, um, gas and utilities fuel oil, pay $1.78 per gallon for the fuel oil. And then you'll see the contracted services grounds, last year, there was money in there for a fence and a sign. So overall, your maintenance costs are up $3,800. The next section on that page, if you take a look, your nursing services, it's really a reduction in the amount of time that the nurse would be required to be here in, in Jackson. And the rest are smaller increases going through, and you'll see the repairs to the buses. That's a three-year average that takes into consideration, and that is an extra bit of $2,413 increase. Same thing with the bus, tires, supplies, just the usage, dollar-cost average over a three-year period. And that will give you your increases, $167,105. The next section of the budget reflects all of the lines in the budget. If you have particular questions, I'd be more than happy to do that. I will direct you to, here's the, really, the new line that's in the budget is on page three. And you'll see salaries for the after-school programming for $4,500. I don't know if you have a question so far, I don't know.
Sure. Yes, my name is Sarah Clines, and I don't know if you'd like me to ask or present, but I'd like to, it's about how possibly you could seek it to put information into the budget warrant that we were with. So would you rather I address that, it's about salaries?
Um, I think it's perfectly appropriate to talk about article one for the operating budget, Sarah, why don't?
Go to the end.
Yeah, we could, uh, we're talking about article one, go to the end and address that.
Okay.
The after-school program is just for salary?
It's actually for stipends for the teachers to provide after-school enrichment activities, robotics, cooking, sewing, and that kind of thing, more expanded, a little bit more than we do currently.
So it's not for materials or?
No, no, that's just for stipends for the teachers. We have a level line that we've always had in the budget that is still the same, that is used for the budget supplies and materials for the enrichment program.
Joyce?
Do you have an after-school program at present?
No, we do occasional enrichment activities after.
After?
And this would be two days a week, the days that we typically are not skiing or have the ESSC program.
And if there are, if people have questions that they missed, or if we're obviously missing this, we can certainly go back to that as well, so we can move on.
Okay. So if you would, page 10 just gives you what's in the trust funds. And we'll talk about those when we get to the warrant articles. But if you flip to the next page, that's titled Estimating Revenue. It'd be a second to get there, we'll just walk through the revenue page. So you'll see that the estimate for this year is $32,000. And that is significantly lower than two years ago, and a little bit lower than this past year. If you go down through the federal grants, they're fairly consistent. Medicaid numbers, we aren't sure those are related to some special education services. Revenue from local services, you have your summer school tuition. Then you go down to the rental of the facilities, consistent, the trust fund, lunch sales. So that revenue is, is down from up above, the unencumbered included in there. Then you'll see the State of New Hampshire Adequacy Grant. And that is a change in the way that the state is, is, um, funding education. And the stabilization grant is being reduced. And you'll see Jackson doesn't qualify for that, um, that money this year, according to the state. You'll see the district assessment, that's the increase, that's what will be raised by taxes. Is a question, Kevin?
Yeah. Why are we no longer qualified for?
They changed the, um, the way that the, the grant is, is set up. Because your payment is higher than what you would receive from the state. Your contribution is higher than what you would receive from the state. So they're shifting the way the money is going. And there's also a reduction of 4% in the total amount of dollars that are raised at that.
So other towns are getting this money?
They're getting 4% less, and then other towns are getting some money. The way the stabilization works is dependent upon things like your free lunch populations, your test scores, reading scores at third grade, sixth grade.
So Sarah, basically what this means is we're a donor town.
Okay.
And.
I get that.
And we're a little bit short on that. The idea combines the formula, it's a very complicated formula, but the idea behind the formula is that every town is supposed to, at least what their, a subset is, they're supposed to get back in our, we get back negative revenue, if you will. And that's the portion that's going up significantly over the last two years. And we knew that was coming from the state, it's, they've been, they've been kind of neglecting it. The legislation has been neglecting it for the past three years, they knew it was going to happen. And they didn't do anything to correct that flaw in the formula. And I believe it's Jackson, I think Mulberry, and it's either Ryer or Camden, I'm not sure which of those towns, but I think it's one, one of those towns is also a donor town, but it is only like three or four of us in the state. And our.
Yeah, their, their, also was reduced.
The original law created donor towns, currently there are no donor towns specifically that contributes money to the state. That went away maybe three or four years ago. So this particular money that's going away has to do with how much you raise for an adequate education based upon the state formula, and whether your taxes exceed that or not. So in this case, Jackson's exceeds the amount of the, the education. Barbs also losing their money, they got less to begin with, they only got getting $16,000 or so. Jackson was actually receiving more through the stabilization grant. But the true donor is what we used to do, because Jackson used to collect tax money, and then the town had to send money to the state, that, that has gone away from what was a true donor town.
So I'm, I'm sorry, I just don't quite understand where the loop comes back around. So should there be a reduction in money going out someplace?
Well, this is just a different form of, uh, tax. You'll see there's a state education tax, which, which was always a local tax to begin with. They just changed it so that the state receives credit now for basically that tax, so. Some districts receive additional money, Jackson was getting $70,000. That's going away, our other descending towns, Barburg has gone away. But some of our other towns are losing about 4% a year, yet unless they have a reason to increase it.
If you don't look at you, I don't understand.
Do I?
If you all, basically, we're not, we're really going to redefine the terms, and, but, like, we're not. So we're not paying any money out anymore at all?
Correct.
Then I don't quite understand how we're losing money that we were never receiving in the first place.
That's what the stabilization grant did, and I believe that's why they're taking it away. It allows you to have additional funding in there within the formula.
Like the state paid us that money, so it's.
Yes, that was Jackson to, to keep. And the state tax is Jackson's to keep, that is a ratio that has to as well.
But this is the part I don't understand, that if we're assessed at $1,584,337, we'll be only retaining 882.
Now, your tax, you have state tax as the 882, and then your local assessed tax is the 1.5. You're, you're retaining all of this money for your budget. It's a combined tax rate, you'll see it on the next tax rate page, you'll see a state tax rate and a local tax rate. That's for the education for Jackson, but it's all money that's stayed in the plan. So your budget is your two-point-five million. And you get to sweep all of the tax bill. It's just who gets credit for it, it's the only difference.
So the good news is it goes to zero, but it doesn't go negative.
Yes.
Basically.
It's negative, they would be from the donor town.
So we probably were receiving revenue from the state before that.
Yes.
Above the collected and local taxes.
That's right, yeah.
So that's the difference. And these other towns that are, that have walked through, they also, uh, tuition their kids out of the street?
No, no, not necessarily. Our, our, for example, lost, lost funding, uh, you know, their tuitioning to, to high school. It's just whether how you were in, in the mix. And I didn't go through the list, I actually thought it was here to see what happened to Mulberry, but it's one you can make sure that. It was a donor town at one point.
So when the word donor town, the tax actually contributed money to the fund, it didn't.
That's right.
Revenue back to cover what we actually paid. That went away two, three years ago, three years ago?
Three years, four years, right.
And so that, at that point in time, you're actually receiving money from the state, now that route is gone. That's reflected.
You at least get to keep the funding now, so.
It might be easier if you go to the next page where it starts talking about your tax rate and things. So you'll see state education tax rate, that's the amount that you folks raised. But you didn't get it back, okay?
We got the key, we got the key.
You got the key, oop, right.
But it's still less than it was in years previous. Like a hundred. So now we have 170 grand less. Compared to last year, it's like a lot of money.
Um.
Yeah, it's a little bit.
No, we're, it, there's still a formula to develop this particular amount of money. There's a cost of an adequate education. To raise, as part of that adequate education, there's a sum of money in, you know, millions of dollars that have to be generated by a flat tax rate across the board. The state determines what that number is going to be for every town. And when that's your base, you start from that to get to all of the numbers. Very properly stated, a formula that's going to the state. And who, special ed is included, free reading slots, children are included, test scores are included, there's a whole formula to get, to get to there.
So that $2.24, the state has said, I think the number is about $3,700 per student.
Correct.
So they're saying you have to raise at least $3,700 for every student that you have. So that's where that, that number comes into.
That's the same for every state, $2.24.
Everybody in the state. So that number is generated according to that.
And because of the value of the properties in Jackson, based on that 2.24, the amount of money that we're collecting from tax payers is to a point where it's so high that we're not getting to the other side.
That's correct.
And your test scores are higher, and your free population is, is all right. So they wait for us to start falling down, and then it was.
But, but it's difficult, and it hasn't hurt our towns here, but they, they give us this number, and it can change next October after tax rates are set. So some communities are expecting, at least we know that we weren't going to get it in Jackson now, but some towns are going to lose money later on, and they can only lose up to 5% of the number. But in some of these towns, that's critical, and they don't, they don't, they not know that number until after tax rates are set. Those are the towns that are really getting into, into trouble.
So then, for the district assessment number, the $1,584,837, that's our total operating budget outside of the grants? Or does that include grants?
No, your total operating budget is your 2.5 million, which is made up of state tax and your local.
Minus, minus the state tax, our operating budget is just what we actually spend to operate the school.
No, 2.5 million is your total.
That's more than, I think, that's what I'm trying to clarify by using, what we actually spend outside of the state tax. The state tax, it, it does what we're assessed up on the state tax, and we don't spend it, it's not, we don't.
It's still part of your, it's still part of your overall budget, Gary.
Still part of the local tax.
It's how you're funding your budget, you're funding your budget by your anticipated budgets and your fund balance, your state tax amount, and your local tax assessment. That is how you fund your 2.5 million dollar budget that you have working for.
It's confusing in that they separate out what they call an education tax. You're paying for both of those combined, it's just they're comping separate.
All right, but outside the state tax, what is our operating budget for? All right, but outside the state tax, what is our operating budget for school district?
Well, you can't confuse the, if you want to say it's the one point five, you can't. But your total operating budget for Jackson's district is two point five.
I understand, but what I'm saying is, what is the cost outside the state tax to run the Jackson parent school and tuition our kids to the middle school?
You can say that at one point five if you want to.
So that's the part I'm understanding about the tax is whether, this is what I'm trying to clarify, is the revenue that we do or don't get from it. I understand that our operative, total operating budget is two million five hundred and sixty-eight thousand one hundred and sixteen. But the part I'm trying to get confused, we spend nine thousand dollars to operate the Jackson parent school, tuition our kids to the middle school and high school. That's the one million five hundred and eighty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. That's the two million five hundred and sixty-eight.
But that is somehow now it's taxed.
So then you, if then you, if you take that out of the four point oh three, that's what you're covering the one point five. And then you broke down the two point two four, which is the two point five. And that makes sense.
So even if you received no revenue and it was purely just to pay for the buildings and tuition agreements with no taxes whatsoever other than local Jackson taxes, you would have to raise two million five hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
That's what it costs.
So then Jackson parent school and the tuition school, high school tuition, and all the agreements and obligations associated with those. So when you have the revenue, that is essentially less than you have to pay if you're making money from other sources. Okay? And that's why it's kind of confusing that state education tax, you're paying that money out and getting it back. So it really is kind of confusing to do that.
It never leaves town, basically. It just stays.
And over the past two years, we've received money back from the out of the grant. That was a benefit.
The stabilization.
On top of. That was a correction that the legislature made three years ago when we were a donor town before that, because before the, the amount retained was less than the amount that we actually paid for the state tax for like two or three years. And so that transition to me is what's been confusing us is how that happened, and I understand it better now. That's why the number is there.
Okay, if you want to go to the tax rate.
Can I just add one question for Becky? That unencumbered balance.
Right.
So over the years, that's been going down. Have we budgeted that it goes down?
This is what we're currently doing by that revenue page. If sometimes part of your fund balance has been, maybe we budget the special ed students that moved, so then it creates a fund balance. Or we budget tuition students, they all go to Bartlett. Con was a little different situation because you paint what it is and then it's adjusted a subsequent year. So there's different ways to have fund balance left. This year, part of your fund balance, it would be greater, but you have three additional students that moved to Jackson this year that are in Bartlett. So that's affected your fund balance to sixty, seventy thousand dollars that might have been left over here that isn't this year. So it's just one more overall of added.
And so that thirty-two, that's at the end of that next school year.
That's the end of right now, under this current school year, however.
We're not, we don't.
Okay, so that's the start of the budget that we're passing to them.
That's right, that's right.
So what's, we should move that number for this one year.
June thirty will have the exact number and that will change with the error in the set tax rate to an exact.
Okay.
So this, this number will change and hopefully it will be correct.
And when we receive that being an exact issue, no, well, really exactly, it's ten point two, you really want a zero. Right, right, right. But you can, you can have the problem like we zero.
Well, except for, does it like into the fifteen, sixteen year, we knew that was the reason why that happened.
Oh, no, not even somebody wrong on this year. I'm just saying that, you know, there's nothing wrong with it being a low number. It's great that we're getting taxes now. You know, we could bump our whole budget up and so we do have.
Right, 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 but that's basically the end.
Right, and Jackson has voted to retain two and a half percent of the district, district assessment, tax assessment. You have opted not to do that in the last two or three years. I don't even know if you did it the first year or not.
We did.
Okay, you may have kept some. In the last two or three years, you've opted to return all of the funds back against the tax rate.
And the reason I've always recommended that actually is because the town has.
Had tax.
Has a very large underserved fund balance.
That's right.
And then if we get impacted with something found extraordinary, we work in collusion with the selectmen to kind of, to put that in overall tax rate on us. It's, it's an easier way to manage it than having us kind of manage a tax rate guarantee.
One of the difficult things is personal. So we're likely now for beginning of September, if somebody needs that has a one person health insurance plan at a lower salary, and you hire somebody at a higher salary with a family plan, you could go, or vice versa, if you have somebody who leaves. So that's why those numbers, Becky does a really good job of trying to never did, but you know, for your five high school students.
Thanks, Becky.
This is the time to ask about programs or my headers or.
Yeah, did you go to the?
If I can finish, I guess, just a tax rate piece, and then if you want to go back specifically.
Can you tell me what major?
On the last page before the warrant articles.
Thank you.
It says estimated tax rate information at the top of the page.
Yes, that, thank you.
So you'll see the estimated school tax rate, again, the district rate plus that state education tax rate. So the tax rate is estimated to be six dollars and twenty-seven cents per thousand. And then you'll see some of the revenue pieces. So that shows a sixty-six cent increase per thousand, which is eleven point eight four percent. That is before any warrant articles. Okay, that's the operating budget. That's that two million five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. We will go through the warrant articles after, which you have two of them that require dollar amounts. One is for ten thousand dollars for a school bus, and the other is the expendable trust for the weekly maintenance. If those two pass, you'll see a total increase of sixty-nine cents per thousand on the tax rate.
So we learned the other thing, I think we'll open up to specific questions in the series. Do you want to make a comment before?
There's not much to you.
Mr. Scott, I think I'll do it before you, but just one more.
Earlier this year in June, Julie got in contact with Becky and asked her for some information on the amount of money you pay for our school operation here in Jackson. And she was kind enough to put, she gave, she sent me one sheet of information. And then I called back and asked her a second sheet. I was looking, trying to compare some different things with schools, and I noticed in the Bartlett school budget, okay, I'm full, that in the Bartlett school budget, they put Jackson School District staff salaries for fiscal year. And I'll just read one off. I'm not going to read it all, but I have a copy. It states that assignment and his principal teacher, annual salary eighty-four thousand six hundred and eighty-eight, longevity, is a stipend, stipend is a hundred and twenty-five. Statutory benefits is twenty thousand three hundred and one, and the total cost of that position is a hundred and five thousand one hundred and fourteen. And I think a lot of times people are asking questions of you, you know, how much does it cost to operate the school? And I think if you put it in the budget this way, instead of lump summing it, you know, this is what such and such gives and so on and so forth, that this would help us as town taxpayers to see what we're spending instead of trying to figure out, like you say, insurance costs, this lump sum. This gives us an idea of what the individual positions and other costs, understanding full level of the superintendent just said, that if a, if a teacher leaves, it could be on the low pay scale or a new teacher, and so insurance might be different and so on. But right now, this includes our staff as it is at this time. And it's something I think that would help people understand what it is.
Well, taking that, my response, I mean, I think it was perfectly fine to put this, and I think we put right in the, in the warrant, is that.
The warrant.
Yeah.
The asset income.
We're putting salaries in there. We don't, we don't put it in there because we don't attach statutory benefits to that. We do have a line item in the budget that shows what statutory benefits are in the aggregate.
In total.
In total. And that's where that belongs in my line. You get into personnel issues if you are, what we can't do as a school board is, we can't have a discussion with the community about individual personnel. It's just not, by law, we're not allowed to. So if you want to tell us that you don't like the size of our budget and you want to reduce, and you start targeting individual staff members because of their statutory benefits, then that's not a discussion to have.
That's not what I'm asking. I'm saying to you that it's public information is put in the Jackson, excuse me, the Bartlett School District warrant every year, and I'm just asking that we do the same. I'm not trying to target any person or a personality or any of that. I'm just saying that teacher costs that much money, and it is something that comes out of my tax bill, that statutory benefit, and I feel I have a right to know.
It's something you don't have a right to know. You do have a right to know that information. Why I'm not in favor of putting that information in our annual warrant is because I don't think that's a fair discussion to have with the community.
May I ask you, Becky, why, do you, as a person that deals with numbers all the time?
It was a request, a vote that was made by the Bartlett School Board, or it could have been done at the annual meeting, I'm not sure, I don't recall where it came from. In this particular case, in the numbers that go into Bartlett, it's showing a salary, it's showing hyperretirement as it relates to the salary. The other benefits are shown in the line item on the bottom. It's not shown by individual teacher or administrator or custodian. So in other words, health, dental life is a sum of money at that, at the bottom. I don't recall what, what's included in that. So what they are saying is, you know, like the principal salary, hyperretirement, anything that's fees that relates to that work is comp. And then health and all of those things are in the line item on the bottom. And those things.
That's a summary. Yeah, that I think is perfectly fine. It's good information.
And that's how Bartlett has yours.
Is that my correct, is that what you've been talking?
Yes, yes. This is exactly what you've been talking about, right. But there's the statutory benefits are only hyper, which is on the bottom, which I call it. That's not, it's not an other. Right there, so that's more than.
If you go to the second page of that page, we're watching you now.
And that is more than what's in the Jackson?
No, that is what is, Jackson currently shows salary, oh my.
Oh, you have, okay, so it is in the.
Right.
Okay. We have to help that little line item in another line item in the budget. It's just not on the same page.
Right, it's, it's a multiple.
So I guess I would not be in favor of putting those numbers into our annual report next to each individual staff member. And I think what Becky's saying is Bartlett doesn't do that either.
No, Bartlett, Bartlett does. This is what Bartlett does. We cannot put in the health, the dental, the life, like that.
And it's public, it's public information?
Not by employee, no, not by employee, no.
Okay, okay.
But Bartlett does it.
The salary is.
Salary in statutory brackets. Our health insurance is not.
So in other words, Becky, you're saying to me that there are benefits that are not included on what is shown here? If you see the line across whichever teacher or staff member you were bringing up, that only includes there. Read the bottom of the next page, tells you how much is in addition to all of this.
The very last line tells you what the total, with the sort of health, heads over.
So that's two thirty-five, seven fifty.
And that might be, it'd be discrimination if you show that in the, me at the bottom.
Right, but, but I have here on this page though is perfectly legit for us.
It's not information, it's what Bartlett does already.
Right, it's published, in fact, that's what I was doing, because a big thing with the community or community workers or municipal workers is that everything is lumped together in this, that, and the other. And the basic thing is for a person to say, okay, I deserve X amount for ratings, then I'm saying to you, it's very vital for me as a taxpayer and a person that works here in the valley to say, well, let's see here, statutory benefits, X dollars, longevity, so on and so forth, to compare, because that's what you do to us. You say you want to compare, and you say that we should bring people up to the payments and so on and so forth. So I'm just saying to you that this is what we actually are giving to our staff. I'm not.
For its cost.
This is what it's costing us per staff member a year, that we have now. As you said, we can't project what the future will be. We can only say this is what it costs us now. And it gives me a little bit of enlightenment, because I, when I look at the total figure here of what people are being paid, it helps me to understand that if I'm working at McDonald's or whatever, you know, it's just, it's just you have to understand that the person that's paying these taxes, I think has a right to see what they're paying of our schools and functions.
And I would agree with that a hundred percent, Sarah. What I would respond to that, there was a, there's parts of those numbers that's difficult to have a popular discussion about. And what's easy to have a popular discussion about is what we appropriate for money to run the school. And if the argument that someone was making that our taxes are too high and we'd like you to work to lower the budget, how that is done should be more up to the school board and how we manage our staff and the discussions we have with our staff than a discussion with the community about that. And particularly when you have a small school, it becomes even more difficult. So if your aim is, is to come to us and say, hey, you know, my taxes are too high, I'd like you to lower the budget. Our response to that should be to look where we need to lower the budget. What each individual staff member is making isn't the first place that we look.
I just feel that it's public knowledge and it's very difficult to get the information in the way it's put in the book at this time.
Well, we have no control of statutory benefits.
Correct. It's a burden tax.
Yeah.
The same as I would pay an employee or if you own your own business. But again, if I pay somebody ten dollars an hour and then I give benefits this twenty, I'm actually paying thirty dollars an hour for that person.
But Sarah, by the way, look, that's costs of doing business and the value you get out of costs of doing business.
Are you a hundred percent?
I would characterize it as a burden, I'd say that's value you get for employees that you have. Angus.
I was going to change the subject.
That's why, that's why I went to you actually. Because there, I think I've had this discussion for three or four hours.
But I'm just going to say to you, are you going to bring this to a vote, or are you just saying that, no, you don't feel that we should be allowed to have this?
We put, we put in our annual budget, this offers already.
Correct.
I think that that's more, I think that's the only information we really need in our annual report.
And everything's in there. It's just not listed, who gets? You just have to look at my categories and you'll. You just have to look at the categories, and you'll come up with those same numbers.
And all of our needs with our salary.
The salary, right. But I mean, even the statutory benefits, they're in there as a whole, just not to an individual. And I contend with Jerry, although we don't really have control over that number, and it really gets a little personal. And I think giving a total number, you know, if you want to divide it by staff members, come up with an average number, it's kind of hard when you're pinpointing one, why one person's higher than the other. It's kind of based on their salary, and other things that we don't have control over.
Well, it's actually appropriated by salary, right? So we have to figure out.
Without coming down one side of the other of this, the fact is, she's asking for a piece of information that's public information. And to my mind, you as a warrant should decide on that. I'm not saying that you should necessarily decide on that, because your annual report is already determined.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but we do provide the information. It's just how does the information get provided, is what we can, in different form. We can give it all, and then it might require to power set the information that that person might want from all of it.
Jared, I absolutely understand what that's kind of feels of it. I don't know that all five members of the community feel that way about it. I'm just saying, the request has been made, you could enter totally request, possibly another board member can have a vote on it, and then it would be decided. I think we could go round and round about this right now.
You're absolutely right, and that's the way to do it.
She, Sarah, has asked a legitimate question, deserves a legitimate, in a sense, about it, the consensus of your board. She's made some good points, you've made some points, maybe you could vote it, and we'll make future, the next time you meet.
Thanks, Anne.
Just a second.
Can I ask Becky a quick question? Aren't these statutory benefits, they're appropriated based on salary, basically?
Right, social security, retirement, you're...
It's a percentage of salary, so you basically take a total in that bullet that we get, and...
Let's put the conversation off this...
It's related to salary.
It's related to salary. I don't want to put this little percentage as... Hold on a second, though, because Anne's point was really the point that she's saying, she's talking about the benefits. Sarah, we made a legitimate request that we should consider. Our annual report's already in production. It's not a session, it's not that we're going to decide from today, but we should have this discussion. So let's put it on hold, business, and I should just move the conversation on a slight notice. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Anne.
Thanks.
Question. First, I was issued, printing the budget is still a priority, I find that interesting.
Well, it's something, it's not printed, but it's, it's in, it's probably as close to final form as it's possible. We could reform that date and do that at this point, but that's going to take probably, given our feelings on it up here, another hour discussion, that our priority should be to get the budget out. And we provide all the information that we need to, it's just what format that we do that in is a discussion that can take place at a later date at this point in time.
So my question is, you mentioned serving after school. I think, I guess an observation is, in the era of maybe federal curriculum mandates, maybe elective studies within a curriculum have diminished over years. And there's certainly been a growing demand for enrichment of that standard curriculum. And when I would think of enrichment with standard curriculum, I would think of extended writing, accelerated writing, accelerated math, advanced arts, science, STEM stuff. Sewing would be, arts and crafts would probably come, could be on that list, and I'm sure they are, and grade diverse programs that have a lot of numbers. And I'm a little surprised to see sewing as an enrichment program as part of it.
To be honest, to get rid of that question, enrichment was supposed to be part of...
It's not an enrichment program, it's an after-school program. To facilitate or to address the needs of the community that could put forward for an after-school program, not an enrichment program after school.
That's disappointing, that's disappointing that the world is spending school money to do daycare. The school district, in my opinion, should be spending money to educate children. And enrichment is a word that we use to define that as outside of a lot of the federal mandates for curriculum. And we have a lot of hard time fitting that into the schedule these days. So having options for kids after school to extend in an area of interest, that is also an area of, I guess, either community, or regional, or national, things we need to do better at, or, you know, provide options for kids. You know, I think robotics, engineering, stamping, advanced writing, all those things fit. I guess I would express disappointment with that word enrichment is not there, and that word enrichment is not defined by the school.
Angus, just to kind of fill you in, this was a conversation with Tom, and I think that we have not reached resolution as far as the big question. I think that's one of the things some of us are hoping for is going to happen when we talk in April, about what that means, and who we are meant to serve, and how. What we did with that was, we had a specific request to meet several needs. One did involve aftercare for people. That's an issue that we heard about, I can tell you, two, three years I've been on this award, it is something I hear about frequently. Everywhere I go, I hear about it, I know other board members are hearing about it, people are raising the board needs. That's a reality that we've had to deal with as a school board, and we have had debates amongst ourselves over, how do you do that in a meaningful way for children that have different backgrounds and have different needs? So for example, if you want to use the term enrichment, I'm with you, I think, why not give the kids who are, you know, private child, daughter in fifth grade, she likes to write, why not have extra writing programs so that that can meet her needs? But what we're finding is that that then puts people in a precarious position, because there are kids that can't make it to that enrichment program. So then, is it sort of an mandatory enrichment program, where we're expecting every kid to show up, and they should give up after-school scheme? Or is it something that we can do during different times of year? I mean, we never got down to the very specifics of what that would mean, and why it's only two days, is because we couldn't agree that we should offer five days of coverage per families. So we really were trying to reach a balance and a compromise, and to see where it goes for you.
And because, if I could respectfully interject, I think if we were, the teachers and what they're talking about presenting, they do consider strongly that these are going to be enrichment quality offerings to students. I could do daycare for a lot less money by not paying my professional certified staff to organize and plan things that are connected to the school day. I could hire a paraprofessional to be there for a couple of hours and have them outside and doing arts and crafts. So what we had in our head bringing it forward was, in fact, an enriching after-school program. And that's when we got into this dialogue about what it should look like and who it should serve, and so it kind of morphed into something. But we as staff members intend to make it an enrichment, enriching program of a high quality for students, and not daycare.
That much to do with... We're the only school, Grammer School Valley, that didn't have a school program. I was against this too, and then somebody brought that to my attention, I was totally against this whole thing. And then I realized that, and then I'm also trying to realize that the schools changed. It's not what it was three, four, five, six, seven, eight years ago. And maybe then there was not a need for any after-school care. And now there seems to be a big need in the community for it. And we were one of the only borough schools in the valley that didn't have any type of after-school program. So it was a starting point for us.
And I, I mean, I guess this is how complicated this issue is, Angus, because I would like to go back to the point you made about defining what the mission is. And you're saying we've done that?
We did it a few years ago.
Well...
Yeah.
Defining what, defining what we do for a curriculum is something that is constantly ongoing, kind of changing. It's not like we just defined 20 years ago, or three years ago, or even yesterday. It has any meaning for a new program that we're offering now. And if we're offering a new program now that's intended as enrichment, I agree with you that we should probably define what that is, and know what that is. And as Jeff said, this is something that we haven't really been able to come to an agreement on, other than what we were first presenting was a number in the forty...
Forty-seven.
Forty-four thousand dollar range, and we all were opposed to that. There's increases that we're already seeing in this year's budget. Gail and staff came up with a creative way to provide some after-school activities. We haven't defined those activities.
Or the English we call...
And you're absolutely right, if you find this a point, I think you've got a legitimate point there, and we could hear that. But also, to kind of just, kind of go through the process here, this is our budget hearing, where we present the budget. And one of the reasons why we present the budget the way we do, we don't go line by line by line, is because that can become cumbersome and prevent important discussions about new things that are in the budget. This is something new in the budget that we're offering. I think, I don't, we've pretty much decided on our operating budget, we're to change it at this point, have some other budget hearings. We're going to maintain this in our budget. At our annual meeting, why we have this as a community is for the opportunity for the legislative body to make changes to the actual budget. That evening, if there's something in the budget that you don't want to see, there could be a motion on the floor to reduce the operating budget by X amount of dollars, and you can decide why, or you can discuss why you want it reduced by that much, and then it would be up to the board to facilitate that decision by the legislative body. So just like, you know, this is something that, we're not demanding, we're in favor of all question mark answers about it, but it's a modest amount of money to provide a depth in this community. And whether it's an after-school soccer program, the school does contribute, the town does contribute to, the after-school scheme, the town does contribute to, this is other activities that go beyond that, that in my mind is a way to, for us, to potentially individual students to achieve in other areas. It does sewing, if it's a robotics project, which it could be, if it's a reading program sometime, we haven't defined exactly what that is, but those are the kinds of opportunities that we are trying to open up to the kids of the school. And that's the reasoning behind it. And the money that we're asking for, apparently it gives you a modest amount, but it is a new program that we're offering, and that's what we do need the legislative body to approve one way or the other. And unless the body doesn't want it to be in there, you have the power of changing. Sarah?
Yes, actually, I think I did see something in the news about some program. But is there a way that you could also put this, I know that the minister of this may or may not be on the news, but I mean, I had no idea, and you said the small amount, what is the total amount on my budget for this? And also, to...
Forty-seven.
Forty-five hundred. Again...
Came down from forty-seven thousand. No, forty-four thousand. Our original budget was forty-three, forty-seven thousand.
So this program that you're running after school, right now, this doesn't, isn't defined, how much does that cost, you know, aside from...
Forty-seven.
Forty-five hundred.
Yeah, and that's two days a week.
Correct. But I'm saying to you, is there any way that this can get out, could you write a little article in the newspaper to let people know what it is? Because people look at this little sheet, and they're not going to know what it is.
It's in minutes.
It's in the minutes, but not everybody, you know, they read the local Jackson News items.
If it was forty thousand dollars, we probably would have been at four thousand five hundred.
Okay, but again, it's just another line item, and it's just like that, I'm going to talk to Becky, I'm sorry. I think we're going to just keep on it, and play. But Becky, as you just mentioned, that, you know, it's forty-five hundred, forty-five hundred is forty-five hundred, and if it's a daycare program for kids after school, so to speak, there are a lot of people that might object to that.
And I did, I did myself in the beginning, until I realized we were the only school in the valley that had no after-school program, and times change.
Well, you do, you have skiing, you just think, you know, it's stronger...
Yeah, I think five days a week, until, you know, five o'clock at night.
So in other words, our school system is going to set fifteen to three-year-olds, take them through junior high, and we're going to have a full daycare for all of them from the time they're three until they graduate. So what are the parents in this time slot?
I don't see how many are present.
I have no problem with that.
Joyce. I think you're trying, but don't try to sell, you shouldn't try to sell this to the town, and we want that advantage daycare, because if the town receives this as daycare. Frankly, that's kind of my objection to the preschool, a part of my objection to preschool, so the cost is online, but this is education, and we don't mind paying for education. But I mean, but I disagree that we should pay for daycare. And I know you're trying to sell it that way, but we really would get in that for a little effort. And if it's an enrichment program, I totally agree that it should be, you know, true enrichment, things that we don't have on the front of the curriculum, you know, the time, money, teachers try to, you know, make it part of this enrichment program.
And the reason we couldn't agree on that, in a lot of part because of me, because I felt strongly that I was going to, I don't care how much money it was, if it was enrichment after school, I was hoping against it. Because now you've got kids that might already have after-school obligations who can't take part in that. So don't ask, if they can't take part in it, why should you pay for it if it's only for half the kids?
And also to clarify, to provide us a fee to participate in the activity.
Is it paying?
Yeah, there's a likely fee for students to participate. So it's, and that's kind of, not necessarily a big revenue part of the cost as much as it is to, a commitment to actually attending and doing the activity. But I think that, again, it's almost, I think what we're looking at is almost a pocket program, and how to do something. It isn't defined entirely yet, and that is a problem. I mean, because if we're going to look at it as enrichment, then why isn't that occurring in school day?
I hope we get rid of that.
And that's what's tough about that. So to me, it is an enrichment, it's an active school activity, and it's an opportunity to do something after school, and an activity for the students at the Jackson Grammar School. I don't consider that daycare, but without defining the program, it's a very gray area. It's a very, is it daycare, or is it an active school activity, or is it enrichment? And because we haven't defined it, as Amy says, Joyce, that's why it might be a toss out of the community, because to be honest with you, I don't know if it's daycare, if it's enrichment, or if it's after-school activity, because we haven't defined it.
Yeah, is enrichment teaching a specific skill? Is that a certification to be an enrichment teacher, or is that...
Not in the state of the nation, though.
But there is an enrichment teacher association.
There is, yes.
And is that anything that any of our team, helping with or helping people define enrichment, whether it's after-school or in school, we seem to go around by the word quite a bit, is that something that in the district or in the SAU, we have experts within SAU that are an enrichment teacher experts?
I believe we're the only school, as far as I know, that has an enrichment teacher teaching during the school day. And she works seven hours and does work during the school day. So we're doing both in a sense, by adding this after-school component, so there is enrichment programming, and she's doing a lot of the work with all school meeting, and artist and residencies, and things of that nature, and advising the teachers when they're doing their integrated units, and bringing things in to augment that for all the children. And one of the things that our committee had agreed upon, we looked at the Ranzilli model, and the three levels that she talks about of enriching students, and we decided that with taxpayer dollars, as he said, we wanted to try to offer things for every student, and not just particular talents or particular events. So we've tried really hard, our new enrichment teacher is interviewing kids, and asking them what they want to see, and trying to streamline it towards interest-based activities. That, as Joyce just said, beyond what the teachers can do, our curriculum is jam-packed. We have curriculum maps to follow in all the content areas. And so to find time to let kids play for an hour and a half with robots, or do coding for two hours, or have a time to build little robots, whether they're working with as a team, with a multi-age focus, because in our school, it's kind of cool that we can have a kindergarten, and a sixth grader, and a fifth grader, all working together on these projects, that after-school piece affords us that... That after-school piece affords us that flexibility to give kids extended time in more relaxed way that we're not saying, okay, now it's time to finish up social studies and we're moving to math and, you know, get the required elements of the curriculum as well.
Maybe it'd be helpful to start with, if you can't define what it is, define what it isn't. I think you're going to add some structure to the conversation.
It's an after-school program, there'll be six weeks, each topic will be six weeks. There we go.
Right, but there'll be six to eight-week sessions.
Six to eight-week sessions. I was going to say, we would not use the word enrichment for that.
And students would sign up for a particular class or topic. And the teachers would have some input as to their interests or what they need one to expand upon in their particular areas of expertise. We're bringing in some community members to assist as well. So I just see it expanding on what we've done. I don't see, I don't know Yenna's daughter, I don't know if she stayed for any of them. But we had some people at our last meeting who talked about the quality and the things that they had enjoyed that their children had been able to participate in this year. So we just saw doing more of the same, mostly on maybe Mondays and Wednesdays when we wouldn't have a soccer or an after-school program because those are the two days of the week that typically don't have any kind of organized activity for kids after school, whether that's a sport or music or whatever it is.
I'm going to ask a totally different question because I wonder what the contract services for grounds are that cost eleven thousand five?
We, us group, mowing and snowmowers that we go do. Oh, that increase the lawns. Oh, Kansas City. We do that, that's where to come to get all the.
No, I thought the seven lawns were separate. But this one is. Twenty seven?
We contract services, we don't, we don't have a lawnmower.
Oh, okay. So it's just so he doesn't do this, though?
He, he doesn't own the lawn, no, so close to the lawnmower. He doesn't also do the snow removal, he doesn't.
Right.
He actually does his own plow and a lot of it, and he probably shouldn't. But, but we contract out for mowing the lawn and snow removal.
And we pay for parking up here, too. We pay for a portion of this shopping plaza's parking lot. Plow that, we pay a portion for the lawn mowing, a part of the easement that we got to be able to drive through there to come.
Yeah, there was a plan to do crack ceiling and stuff over for this, this property here, but we have to take these up next year, so.
That's not.
Crack ceiling.
That's okay, that's up for both.
Is that typical of the school districts contracted out and don't have the town do it?
A good chunk of this is because we have to pay for this, because of the easement to get.
Right, the town does our loop driveway and our parking lot. And the contractor does the Whitney parking lot over here. And then John, our maintenance guy, he does the snowmowing of the sidewalks and the playground areas himself, and the fine-tuning of the Whitney walk. He keeps, you know, he maintains those.
And we pay a portion of the plow and around. One thing I can say is what personally with the laws are the answers is that there's a very good relationship between the town, the contractor, and our maintenance staff. And all three work very diligently to keep our costs for milling the lawn and snow removal and maintaining parking areas as best they can. The contractor doesn't charge a market rate for the services they perform for the milling and snow removal. Our maintenance person uses his own plow truck to plow the snow. And goes above and beyond and comes to snow removal. And the town, as much as it hates our new fences and how messy they look, is working as hard as they can to deal with people, rubable snow. I'm quite certain it's the cheapest way to do it. Because all three of those entities are working hard to do it as cheap as possible. If you were to buy our own lawnmower and run that, it would cost us a lot more.
But a big chunk of that money is what we have on our work.
Sounds like a saving activity.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, maybe forty percent of, I think it's forty percent. I have no thinking, but the percentage of the cost for the maintenance.
For this whole, this whole site.
We pay forty percent. We do probably.
Yeah, I'm just saying that that is, that's a fixed sum that we got to pay.
Fifty, fifty percent of the cost for mowing this. Yes, they have to do the whole crack ceiling. There's five thousand in the budget for our share.
Yeah, we pay absolutely.
To do this.
So we pay half of it.
And that's, that's your contract that you have.
Would be because of these. I understand that, that's, it's not like we're paying his.
Oh, right, yeah.
It's the entire repair. Whereas we use.
What I'm saying is a huge chunk of that budget is that.
Might be part of the control. Right, what I'm saying is a huge, a very good relationship between the property owners there, the town, the contractor, and our maintenance staff.
Yeah, I understand your question, remaining the same way that the town does. Because we, we're stuck here, we have to pay. The town pays for all this, this guy's parking.
But the town does.
Does.
Well, they do, actually. And that's what I'm saying, there's good communication, there's a good relationship. It works well and it saves us money.
Eighty-three thousand dollars for the money?
Not every time. But those are the big ones. They come through with the labor and pick it up and put it somewhere else. I mean, what, they don't, they don't have anything there.
What I would say is a eighty-zero, because we don't have an obligation to reimburse the laborers of that.
Yes, we pay fifty percent of the cost on maintaining the entire apartment area from your room in. But we use for.
Sorry, that's what you know. Are you coming from?
We use for.
We don't, we don't. Second, we don't have, we give you zero, we have to get a.
We don't, we have to. We're great. Yeah, is there more questions?
One last question about not enrichment, change the word. So let's say the school wants, let's say the classroom wants to go do something. Let's say they decide they want to take a trip to Boston or go do a trip. Where does that money come from? Like, if you want to, if, like, next year, is there a slush fund? Is there a?
They have to be budgeted into something big like.
We are, well, we are, we do have this in, that's a positive, critical resources, doesn't it count?
Yes, we have a couple of different lines in the budget for that. Field trips, of course, the bus is paid for through the field trip line. And then there's a student activities fund as well as an enrichment line, which we've put money into, deciding for artist and residencies and things like that. Part of what we do for, say, the ferry beach trip is we fundraise for that so that doesn't come out of the taxpayer budgets. But if you wanted to do like an overnight trip, we'd have to do some fundraising. But a bus, one-day bus trip, that would be something that we would cover under our field trips and our.
Can I make a question? We put five thousand more dollars into that.
Into the.
Line of the trip.
So on the bottom of page one, you'll see just a couple of different lines. The second from the bottom, you'll see enrichment programs. There's twelve hundred dollars in there that will support some of the pieces that you're talking about. Then if you go to.
Under co-curricular, in the co-curricular section. Page two.
Page three.
Paying your transportation and field trips.
And then we also have some, I won't call it discretion, we get some grant funding which we use for a lot of our special events. That's a kind of grant that we get, and that's what we spend.
You also have twelve hundred dollars for an artist and residence that contributes.
Second, I'm sorry, what did you say about transportation?
It's twenty-five hundred dollars, it's, I'm sorry.
Transportation. Twenty-five hundred dollars, yeah, on page eight.
We're, do you, the, the. We talked about putting, we talked about putting five thousand more dollars into the budget this year. I guess to cover additional field trips. And I guess we didn't get that as above.
Although the field trip line is up from last year. Yeah, it's up five hundred dollars.
But one of the things, one of the problems I was getting that field trip covered is how much the bus driver actually makes from that field trip. So we thought the way to compensate for that or we would give a minimal amount of money to a bus driver to do a field trip to make the work of the bus driver feel itself. And I guess we didn't get it in this year, but.
We agree on the rate.
We agree on the rate of pay. And I think what the, what the problem is with a long field trip is that our two bus drivers for our district are tied up doing the bus runs. So there's only so many hours they can actually be on a field trip and still be back in time to get the high school run and the Bible youngsters. So when we do a long field trip like going to Boston, we need to hire a substitute bus driver. And district-wide, there's a real difficult time with getting substitute bus drivers. So what we have done is put in some language for our substitute drivers. And I don't remember exactly what the details were, but they would get more money for a guaranteed amount.
For our minimum.
For our minimum, at a little bit of a higher rate of pay. So perhaps they would rather take us on our trip than to take a Kennesaw trip to, you know, an athletic trip.
So. Well, I don't think it's actually to, to test it from somewhere else. It was actually, it was, it was to do a two-hour trip for a bus driver that might not have the freedom to come to Jackson and get the bus, clean up the bus, get the bus ready. They're only making a hundred and fifty dollars, it might not be worth it then. Because they don't, they, a lot, all that time, travel time and the bus preparation time isn't considered in the actual pay time that they get. So we did, I think we came up with a plan that we would pay them for a bit more than two hours. And there was more hours, more than four hours. So that it would be worth their while to do a two-hour field trip or a three-hour field trip. So we are trying to do that. But I think to answer your question in direct, is that there doesn't seem to be any significant funds in the budget for field trips.
If a teacher knew they wanted to do an overnight Washington DC, that would come, that would be put in the budget, something that they would plan for.
Were you thinking about overnight kind of field trips? Because that's.
But the flexibility is in budget to, I mean, normally, you know, we went through a thing this summer where the curriculum for fifth and sixth grade was not determined until what I understood, even after school started, like what was going to happen during the year. So I was interested in what the limitations of the budget were on creativity in that curriculum.
Just as a point of interest, I'd clarify a question for the public. Please explain the difference between the salary for the artist and residents and the artist and residents. I just think that question might come. And this is under co-curricular.
Want me to take that one? Yeah. When we hired our art teacher, there were extra duties beyond the teaching of art that we hoped that she would do for us, maintaining the Whitney Center, offering after-school artistic things for children. And so I believe the board negotiated in a stipend to offer her for the extra hours that she would work beyond her school day to meet some of those needs that we have.
Great, so it's for an individual, not an umbrella?
Well, in theory, it's an umbrella, it's an umbrella, but anyone.
Okay.
We, that was our first year doing it, so I guess it was one individual.
Any other questions on the operating budget? If you think of, once I clarify, I have a comment, of course, I'll go back to it. But I think we'll move on to the article, the article one. Article two is to see if the school district will, both rates are per create ten thousand dollars we have to the capital reserve on school buses previously established for this purpose. And that we reduce from fifteen thousand down to ten thousand dollars this year. And we basically did that because we always seem to have more money than we need left over in the fund after we purchase the bus. And we were trying to reduce the overall impact to the tax rate this year. So that was one area we reduced it by five thousand dollars down to ten. We should still be able to keep up with the plans, bus purchase schedule by reducing it to ten. So that's why we've done that. Any questions, comments, thoughts?
Ever since I've had, we've had kids in school in fourteen years, the issue of being able to transport skis on a bus has been frustrating. And having to have parents personally transport skis, even if kids are riding a bus over Barlow or something like that has been. And so it's across the budget, a bus having, having the ability to put skis on a bus or?
They haven't, they haven't, the problem is nobody's allowed to take this to home or off of it.
The bus driver. Rules and regulations.
So you have to have a parent, staff monitor at both places.
So technically.
Remotes them and take them off separate from the bus driver.
It's not a bus issue, it's not a.
It's a state.
Bus issue, it's a. It's a process issue. So we, we have, the bus has the ability to do it.
We have it.
It's, we have to do it. In regards to the bus, the bus can do it.
And we were doing it at the Barlow's last year, are we doing it this year? Oh, last year we did.
Now, I believe our lunch person is carrying this.
Hi, so this is your last parent, I'm just waiting, Susan. So this year, it was finally, the bus driver with the skis went on board and the roads are for it. But we need a Jackson staff person to meet the class in order to take the skis off or a volunteer parent. That's the way it works.
I told, mostly, you said if you were to fly somebody, all we have to do is let them know what was happening, and he would, and that changed.
Sorry?
That was, we had.
I guess I'd like to kind of cut this conversation off. In regards to the bus, the bus can do it. Sorry.
It's a bus. It's a bus. You gotta have some other sense.
So that might affect us a bit. Well, we can talk about that probably at a board meeting or something, too. We do, so. Article three is to see if the school district will vote to raise the per create the sum of three thousand dollars to be added to the Whitney Maintenance Trust Fund, which was established in 2010. That three thousand dollars is basically one-third of the revenue that we probably will receive from the Whitney Fund. And by contract, we do need to divide that into different areas of capital improvements, maintenance, and programming. Because the amounts relatively around ten thousand dollars over here, we appropriate three thousand dollars to be added to the capital fund for that. That fund, that money is reimbursed from the Whitney Fund. Not entirely, though, is it?
Yeah, we take the whole thing and then we give our.
We give back to friends at Whitney and then you do part, so.
So we retain some of the fund money from that. So this is, the three thousand dollars doesn't need to be appropriated for taxes at the end. It comes from the Whitney Fund. So long as that fund is generating at least three thousand dollars or more, which it regularly has been, so. Any questions or comments about? It averages to be ten and twelve anyway, on a year-to-year basis. As long as it appropriates, as long as it's funding more than three thousand dollars, that money gets covered by that. Though we are obligated to put money from that into a capital reserve fund, so that's why I guess there. Article four is to see if the school district will vote to approve three-year tuition contract with the Barlow School District. Jackson seventh and eighth grade students to attend to decide apart from elementary school. That money to facilitate that is in the operating budget, so this isn't an appropriation article. But it is, it, our contract needs to be agreed by the town.
So how does that work if Barlow's willing to establish a sixth and a eighth? So if we were through the contract, how will that play out with different possibilities in the future?
There's, there's language in the contract that will let us renegotiate if that happens and we decide to send our kids over. And it not, doesn't necessarily have to be able to say work.
One thing that you need to provide with this, so, that I have copies in the contract here, but I don't know if we made the contracts available to the general public before then, which we should probably do.
I think it may be in the, in the annual report, but not 100% certain.
I'm not sure.
We should probably have copies available.
I know we have in the past, so.
We should probably, what we should try to do is get some copies to the town office so that they're available there because they're open. They're accessible during the day, so people need to, probably better to go click on the. up, like on the, in the hallway at the town office.
Well, where is the room?
That's a good idea. So we need to get copies of that contract out there. The language regarding sixth grade is, isn't very specific in the contract. But that was part of the discussion and negotiation of this contract with Bartlet. The contract is for all intents and purposes the same as the old contract. And.
Just determination language is different, I think.
It's more clear. More clarity, you know, which is to what.
But the tuition formula is the same tuition formula that was in the old contract. So when it comes down to that's a whole simple, the contract is basically, probably on average, a little fluctuation every year, it's based on the average cost per student and for the amount of kids that we actually send. So it's, that's the benefit of the Jackson. Typically, both Washington paying for the cost per student is less than what our cost per student is. So it's a pretty good contract, I think, with Jackson. Of course, with Bartlet too, because they're happy about it, so. We should get copies of that out there so people can read it. But in regards to sixth grade, Bartlet has extended the invitation for our sixth graders to go there. And the contract line, which reflects on it, says that they're open to that, but it doesn't require it. So we're not obligated to send our sixth graders to Bartlet by this contract. Joyce?
If, um, if, yes, if, right, you shouldn't have or shouldn't go to Bartlet, will that allow room for the preschool here in the school?
I don't think that's a question that we'd be able to answer this evening. That's certainly been thrown out there as, we, in the discussion of the preschool, it's been part of that discussion and probably always will be, so it's something that we'll consider moving forward with the preschool discussion.
I wrote them already, because I did, and I think it was yesterday, the end term, some regarding health insurance. I'll just refer out to the Congress School. Is that correct when you, Jackson, you know?
It's, yes, it is, and that, it's, it's the same.
Are you part of the elite program?
We're not part of their, we should say, other than that we use the same, we use the same trust. So that letter together would be relative to the Jackson, to what we offer in Jackson as well. I would, I take some issue with the authority itself because I think it was inaccurate in many ways, but.
I wouldn't know that, but it was interesting to, or it seemed, or something to explore.
But, well, I mean, I think that, you know, it was kind of challenging to the school board to say, hey, are you at least looking at other programs? And I'm sure, yes, we do. It's not, we don't just, you know, it's, we just don't do the same thing every year because we do. Kevin, do you want to address that?
Yeah, just, just because it is an issue at our SEU nine board meeting, one of the agenda items is, is that Jim Hill and the SEU is looking at exploring competitive, we've been in conversations with different healthcare companies as well. And actually, Jackson will be part of our group rating when we start to, to go out and look for competitive pricing on, on some of these health, health costs. So it's, it is, it's under our mind, absolutely, absolutely.
Any more questions, comments? I do thank you all for coming this evening.
And there's two vacancies coming up on the school board, so you get sold tomorrow and I'll get your name in there. Anybody's interested.
I'm going to close the public hearing at this point. We're going to go back into our regular board meeting, close up the visitor, people are likely to stay inside. But at the whole of this point, we're not going to, I see, we're going to. Yeah. Thanks, Brooke. I've said it. She said she'd be satisfied as well, so.
So I think it's totally, I don't know if we could get on my mission, but I think it's totally fine and straight for you to have Gail take over contact administration. What my hope would be, as someone who's worked on it and as a band member, is that we will continue the conversation, hopefully at these other legislative updates. And I do, there was some disagreement on committee about location. And I do think that that is working visiting, depending on what happens. So I just would hope that we would keep our minds open on the school board side. But by all means, I'm happy to pass that off together. Committee finished what it's worth. I think she's totally fine with that. I just wanted to make sure that the conversation stayed over the morrow and that it wasn't just that we were going to pursue that church option or nothing. Because I do think that we need to come up with some sort of answer for early childhood education intervention for Jackson taxpayers, whether it's a preschool, that's public, or some other opportunity. I do think that is something that I really came around to as I went through this process almost last, almost two years.
And I guess I was, I was, but I think that there's very recent not to have a conversation with the church. I think the first thing that we have to do as a school board is decide whether we're going to pursue a public preschool. And we can certainly decide if we're not to. But if we are, when we do that, I think then we need to probably at an next board meeting or at some meeting, task subcommittees with vetting out the work, whether it's one, you know, one day, or one to two, two to two, two to three, depends on, maybe there's one committee looking at locations as options. And, I mean, in a perfect world, that's six, that's six grades, that's three, six schools within it.
It's not that easy.
But because I do. Anyway, as far as, as far as what's happening in the legislature's concern, from my viewpoint as a board, we can decide to be active in the process of the legislative going to this board. We can certainly do that. That's gone, goes beyond the scope of anything that these boards have ever done before. We've never done it, but we do, we could and we want to. But if we don't participate in the legislative process, there really isn't anything for us to consider. I mean, for us to talk about something like that, may or may not, do or may or may not provide, go through the scope of what we can do.
Oh, no.
And I think we'd be spinning our wheels to doing other, I think that what we can consider is what we have the ability to do, which is we could provide a public preschool. And if we wanted to decide to pursue that, we should pursue that. If we don't want to pursue a public preschool, then we can stop and not do it. I think as far as exploring other avenues, that goes beyond the scope of what we can do as a board. Because it just isn't, it's not what we, it's, there's lots of providers to do that.
And all I'm saying is that I think at this time, we can have the information. So if you, going back to what you said before, if you want to just wait longer to, like, get a public, let's finish it up and then we can either make a move to pursue a public preschool or not. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Good. So I'll number that.
And I'm like, Gail, I think we can have your support and, and to work together in doing that.
And so maybe what we can do at this point is, because I've been in point of contact, I can, I think, you know, maybe, no, I'll pass that off officially to you and then you can, because I do think it's tough to have a single point of contact so that it is not all these different conversations happening. So let's pass it to Gail and we'll see what happens.
On the chair.
On the chair, yes, yes, yes. Right, because that will make, maybe make a decision on whether you're kind of, for us.
I think we can sit through everything else, but Mike, are we going to set some comments? Okay. We can go right to the set. I can hear some. I didn't want to just talk to the citizens comments without these asking. Yeah, so we can go right, because the annual meeting is already been set for March, March second. I think we voted on that back in, I remember. We have the board, we already did that. I don't think we need to schedule a board session at this point in time because it's just too far ahead for everybody to figure out a date that we're going to actually do that.
But I think we hit on it.
Let's leave it on the agenda so that we actually, it's legitimate. And we have the public hearing.
Do we have an hour?
Oh, we do need to vote on the.
On the hour.
And I guess I would just kind of, I don't know, force the board, maybe we have a couple here, but is there any opposition to any board? Any board, any formal kind of, do you want to approve the twelve, one, three, five as a whole?
Yeah.
So, anything in motion to recommend particles one, two, three, four? You don't buy a lot of, five, four, these, kind of, I see, four, so there's four.
Motion.
Any more discussion? No.
I know.
Did you?
If there's any discussion, then you need to.
Yeah, I go first. I can reply to the secret, okay, this is legitimate, it's more for nation.
All those in favor? So just, I mean, the, on the board, show record, the top school board five is enough to zero for each of the artists.
Now, on that, should we be, is there, should we be telling them that our tax base at Bartlet has proven already or are they going to vote for two? Like if they go against it, will we go, will we just do zero? Nothing's happened, but I'm just saying, do we need to let them know that? That our number fours also has to be going on by Bartlet or in Bartlet?
Yeah, I certainly think that on March second, we should explain that, that, yeah, the contract needs to be approved by the town of Bartlet as well. And all those buildings obligating the town to use the tuition rate for three years, and that's what we want to explain as well. We still ask for money in, in the budget either way, and we probably will, even if they don't, even if Bartlet doesn't approve the contract, we'll still probably come up with a tuition rate based on that. So if Bartlet doesn't, it's not a, a big deal. That shouldn't be, is there a meeting after ours?
That's where I was getting at. There are meetings.
I think we have a first.
For, who's the first? From some reason I thought this year they were.
Well, it's interesting.
They're meeting on the.
But I think, yeah, that should be explained, but I think it should also be explained that what is part of the weekend, whether Bartlet approves it after us or not, we still need to do something with our, and that will probably be it, and it probably will be the same money in our budget, so. That, that should be, that is the information that should really be concerned.
Yeah, I was going to try and recover, but let's say, let's say our tax base approved it, Bartlet tax base is, go, and then we renegotiate the rate before we say that. That's more what I was getting at. That we need to.
You would do it like that.
You don't. Nothing's happened, I don't need to react to state or anything like that. That's why you did this.
Right, you have a.
Didn't agree. Looking at the.
So, thank you all for coming. Mike, bless your coming. Hey, thank you for us.